Okay, come to order for this regular workshop meeting and you've got to copy the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. Now we entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Here now in all the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We have minutes and consent items here, also minutes from October 21st, 2025, regular meeting and six consent items.
Move as option of the minutes and the consent items.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and second, any further discussion? Here now, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, first item tonight is the one city center project delivery method and phase three design contract. And Anthony, you'll present our guest for us tonight.
Yes, sir, I'll kick it off. And we've got two wonderful guests here that you've seen before, Tessa Romanowski and Jason Galloway from our project team. And they're going to continue the discussion that we started in October. As you recall, the first workshop, I gave you an update on where we are with the program or with the project. And that we were going to follow up with several other decision items that we would need to make to keep it moving. So tonight, what we're going to talk about is project delivery method as well as phase three of the design contract. Because those are in fact the next two decisions that need to be made before our friends here can continue the work in designing and getting us ready to actually put the project out to bid. So, Jason?
All right. Mayor, council members, it's a pleasure to be here today, excited about this project. I'll make sure I go the right way here. So as Anthony mentioned, we have a short slide presentation today to go through concerning the construction delivery methods in the next phase of design. So starting with the construction delivery methods, go through a quick briefing of what the different types of delivery methods are. We'll get into a little bit more specifics and then we'll talk a little about some of the recommendations that we have on the project. So there are three general types of construction delivery methods. Those are design bid build, which has been the standard delivery method for many years. And there's construction manager at risk and the design build methods. And we'll go through those a little bit more detail here shortly. And each one of these, depending on which, some of these selection considerations will help us guide decision on which delivery method we want to proceed with. Those are typically based on the project complexity, the timeline, and the stakeholder needs. And all of this is included in chapter 143 of the North Carolina General Statutes. That statutes has quite a bit of information about these different types of delivery methods and the laws behind them. So starting with the design bid build process, like I mentioned, this is the standard delivery method for construction projects for a very long time. And so we're looking at these in six different categories here. We'll do the same for each one of these delivery methods. So the first is the project contracts. For this project contract, you start with the design contract and then sequentially you follow into a construction contract. That comes after bidding the project out and making a selection on who is best suited for the project based on the bid and the responsiveness, the responsibility, and the cost of the project. Second is the selection. That's typically based on whoever comes in after bid day, the lowest responsible responsive bidder. So it's who is there, who shows that they have the capacity to complete the project and responses a bidder. Third is collaboration. This is kind of how we're measuring how much the contractor has input and say into the project and how it's designed. For design bid build, it's very minimal. They're essentially getting a package of drawings and they're putting a price on it and then they're contracted to build what's in the drawings. Fourth is the cost control. We want to make sure we're spending cities money appropriately, we're staying on budget. And this is one of the top priorities for the project.
Let's go backwards. I think we skipped a second.
One.
Jumped ahead.
There we go. Perfect. So for cost control, when we're doing this throughout the design process, we're pulling together some prices, some costs for the projects. We're calling out the engineers, the opinion of probable cost. That's based on our knowledge and our cost estimator consultant's knowledge of how much today's prices are. And we do our best to come in line with what actual reality and real costs are. But really, we don't know what that cost is until we put the project out. And it is competitively bid, so it is, people are pricing it competitively, they want to make sure that they get the project. So you do get, in theory, the best cost for the project, or best price for the project. Fifth is your speed of delivery. Design bid build is typically the slowest, just because of the amount of time it takes to put together a complete set of drawings. Then you have to go through the bid process, which can take several months, and then contracting, which can also take several months. And then once you get to construction, you're working through RFIs or requests for information and other submittals, that sort of thing. So it does take quite a bit of time, both on the front end and the back end. And then six is the risk. And design bid build, the owner and the design team hold that risk. If we over budget, when bids come in, we're starting over, we're taking things out. So the risk is quite high on the ownership side of things. All right, the second type of delivery method that we'll go through is the construction manager at risk. And this, in this type of delivery method, we have the design contract, which we're already under. And then, but as part of the process, you bring in a construction manager. And they come in typically with a pre-construction and then the construction contract. So they are a member of the team during the design process. And so they're providing input at every step of the way. You select your construction manager at risk based on their qualifications, so it's not necessarily based on the lowest price, at least for the construction manager. But once you have the construction manager on the team, we go out to bid for each division. So you'll have bids, like you would for the design bid build, for each component of the project. So you'll have somebody doing earthwork and they'll bid on that. So it is still competitively bid, it's just under the umbrella of the construction manager. The collaboration on this is a medium level. They're coming in about 30% complete, so they are providing some input, they're doing constructability reviews, they're doing those sort of things as we move a little bit further into the design. Fourth is cost control. We're still looking at our engineers' opinion of probable cost, but you're getting the construction manager who has a better connection with what it actually costs to build a project. And they're prodding their estimates all along the way. And that's all working towards your guaranteed maximum price or your GMP. That is the price that everybody settles on at the end of the project. So that's what they say when we're done with the project, we have the plans, we're done, they will set that guaranteed maximum price and that gets approved and that is the cost of the project. And then, like I've just mentioned, that each division is competitively bid along the way. Speed of delivery, it's a medium. Because we're getting feedback along the way, we can accelerate some areas. And so it's a good moderate pace for the speed of delivery. And the risk is kind of transferred to the construction manager. So helps kind of mitigate some of those risks along the way. And then the third, pretty typical delivery method is design build method. With this one, there's only one contract. Your design build team designs it and builds it. So there's only one contract for the project. This is also selected with qualifications, so you're picking the team who meets the qualifications that are set up for the project. Collaboration is high because you have the construction manager there from the very start. Cost control, design builder provides all the estimates, so they know, they're talking to their subcontractors along the way, so it's a very good way to control your cost. And then they also do a guaranteed maximum price, much like the CM at risk. Speed of delivery, this is the fastest method because everybody's coordinated, moving forward at the same pace, and then all the risk is on the design builder. And our next slide here, this is just a table with all those kind of summarized into one So moving into our recommendations, I'll hand it off to Tessa here to kind of walk through some of our project needs.
Again, thank you so much for having us. I'm Tessa Romanowski. I'm the architect, or I represent the architecture team as part of the overall project team. We are going to talk in the next two slides, just more, a little bit more specifically, about how it affects our sports and events center. As Jason mentioned, because this is a high, like a high-level, quality, complicated complex, and it's a very diverse project with many, many systems coming in together to make this building work, it is very important to have all of that coordinated to a very high level and the sooner the better. We are, as you know, at the end of schematic design and bringing them in, this construction manager in at design development is a really good idea because we still have room for the design to evolve through the end of the design development phase before we start into the production drawings. It helps us control the budget as well because we'll get, we can get real-time cost information based on even a single decision that's made in a design meeting with the owner and the builder. They can, they can check, kind of fact-check right there on the spot. And as Jason mentioned, it kind of helps speed up the delivery of the project because they are so focused on schedule as well, that everybody is being held to a very high pace of milestones and meeting those. We put together a few benchmarks and best practices that we have had success with as well as learned the hard way. I wanted to compile those into one thing here to say that it, a lot of design build, or not design build, excuse me, CM at risk, when you're having the cost estimating done throughout the process, you want to make sure that there are checkpoints, not only at the end of each phase. Because at some, in some projects that we've had, where we had one at the end of design development and then one again at the end of construction drawings, it really only gives you one checkpoint for kind of like seeing where you're at. Because by the time you're at the end of construction drawings, I mean, you are just about ready to go to permit and you know, it's a big scramble if somebody says, oh, this is going to be too expensive, it's going to come in a lot higher than we thought. So we always recommend getting in the contract, some cost estimate checks kind of midway through the phases as well, because it gives you time to value engineer and to really evaluate what, what you're doing and whether it makes sense for the project. Another thing is to be very specific about contingencies. You'll have a design contingency, an owner contingency, and there'll be a construction contingency. It's very important to outline who's in charge of those and under what circumstances those contingencies can be used. So getting those details ironed out in the very beginning during the contracting with the CM at risk is very important. It's also a good idea to define the alternate bids, control cost, so to point out things that could possibly be add alternates, meaning that they're not going to be in the base construction bid, but they might be something that if things end up coming in a little lower than expected, you might want to add them into the project later. And then having a scope that's agreed by all parties, meaning the program of the building, a well-defined scope, meaning that the builder, the designer, and the owner all agree what is in the base scope for the program for the building. And then anything that's an add to that would possibly be additional cost beyond the GMP. And then to clarify owners non-negotiables, it's very important. And what I mean by that is what are the most important features of the building? What are the things that are sacred and we don't want to touch in value engineering? And those are important also to outline so that when things do need to be evaluated from a value engineering standpoint, we know we're not touching this piece because that's important and integral to the success of the building.
And I'll continue, there's a few things that, as we move forward with the project, from a site perspective, we find value in having a construction manager as part of the team really. So things like site access and how we, the logistics that don't necessarily make it into a plan, but we can get good feedback. Where's the trailer? Where's the contractor's going to park throughout the day? Those things are, are things that we can make very educated guesses at, but until you know the logistics of the site and how things work, it's really good to have that. Big thing is grading. We do have software that helps us understand how much earthwork is needed, but that's not always the same software as our grading contractors use. So as part of having a construction manager on the team, they're able to review our plans, they're able to run our design through software. And many times, they say things like, if we can raise a site three to four inches, we can have a balanced site, we can save you $500,000 on this. Especially a site this size, having somebody that has that, has that ability is worth quite a bit. Also, they can give us feedback on materials, is it available, is it the same material, is it similar materials, that sort of thing. They always provide good feedback there and then just making sure that we're providing the level of quality that we all expect. So talking a little bit about specifically the benefits of a CM at risk, it is a qualification based selection. So we set the criteria and then we grade them and we select the team that is best suited for the project. It's not based on, on the cost of the project. It allows for early cap collaboration, so they're providing feedback all along the way. So we want to have as many experts on the team as possible, just like we have engineers, architects, we have folks from all different angles. So we want everybody to provide a good perspective there. So always good to have them available for that. Cost certainty, they're pricing this project knowing that they have to build it for that price. So there's much more certainty and higher certainty in that the prices that they're giving us are accurate. We're able to transfer risk with the CM at risk delivery method, it's no longer resting on, on the city. And then schedule efficiency, they're just able to find those ways to, to keep the project moving rapidly because we know the speed to delivery often saves us some, some money in escalation. A few more benefits, I just mentioned schedule efficiency, also transparency with the CM at risk, because the project is bid out, you do get to see what each component of the project costs. They're able to control the quality, they understand they're part of the team, so they know what the expectations are. We do have flexibility throughout because they're able to give us feedback and tell us where we need to change. And then the owner advocacy, so they are the owner's advocate for the construction team. So they're, they're always advocating for the best quality and the best deliverables from their subcontractors.
If I could add one more thing that I failed to mention is that the constructability aspect is really important. So if they're looking through our drawings and the architecture team has detailed part of the building and they look at that and identify it and say, you've done this really in a very complex way, we can simplify that a lot and have the same outcome and save a lot of money. That's another added benefit.
All right, but not every delivery method is perfect. So there are some limitations to it. There is a higher initial cost, there is a cost to have a construction manager as part of the team, so that's during the pre-construction process. There are sometimes some GMP or guaranteed maximum price challenges, worked out as a project team and then brought to you all for approval. So we want to make sure that that price is accurate. So just getting to that point can sometimes present some challenges, but those are often overcome and this type of delivery method has been proven. Also, there's, this contract negotiation is a little bit more complex than some of the other ones, only because there's different levels of services that your construction manager can provide. They can be involved at every step of the way, or they can just come in and sort of milestone, so that's a little bit more complex. And then this last one here, limitation, I don't think it is for this project, but your CM at risk does require some owner involvement, there is a contract to manage on that side, but from this, from my perspective, that's, that's not necessarily a limitation, that's something that's, that would be an advantage. So after going through these, we do make the recommendation that this project delivery method uses the construction manager at risk process, just based on the quality of the project that we're trying to obtain, the speed of delivery, and then the cost management components to that. So looking towards the next steps, we've completed the master planning and the schematic design and the rezoning. So the next steps, as we've just discussed, is the determination of the project delivery method. And then the approval of the design development, construction drawings that this phase three designed. So moving, moving towards those construction drawings. And what's included in this? This is the final geotechnical studies and reports. We do have some preliminary studies, but now that we know where the building is and where the parking is, we want to get some very location-specific testing done on that. This is design development, which is 60% complete, and construction documents, which is 100% for each discipline. So this is really where the details of the, of the design are worked into the project. And then permitting, we do have site permitting, building permitting, and environmental permitting with the wetlands on the site. And the contract for this, the contract fee for this phase of the project is $5.65 million.
So mayor, if I could, just to provide some, some context from our perspective. Oh, wrong way. The next steps are what's shown on the screen. the bottom two bullets are the next steps. And so at this point, we've really kind of paused until we're able to make those, those decisions. I know that we're working with the county commissioners as well on kind of what their involvement in the project might be. So there's, there's a lot of things that would need to come together in order for us to finally decide the delivery method. We are recommending the construction manager at risk because of the complexity of the project, okay? The cost of the project, as well as the fact that, you know, it's, it's something that we've never built before. So having that added expertise to the, adding that to the team, we feel is going to help us be a lot more successful in the end in delivering what we're all looking for at the best, most reasonable cost. So, and you can tell that that's been our strategy all along. As we move through phases of this project, we've added on expertise to help inform us in decisions. So at some point, we will have to make a decision on the project delivery. Would love to hear your feedback on the different options. The design bid build is more traditional and is typically what we do, okay? But it's also slow and it creates challenges from an administrative standpoint on our side and exposes, at least in my opinion, exposes us to potential higher risk for change orders and other unforeseen costs down the road. Design bid, the design build process, that's just not an option for us frankly. We're too far down the road. We're too far down.
Yeah, yeah.
But I would also offer to you that it gives up a lot of the control that we have over the project, so it wouldn't have been a good process for us to start with. Right there in the middle with a construction manager at risk, it controls a lot of our risk, it gets expertise on board, right? But then it also gives us a reasonable delivery speed. And it's kind of what I would call the middle ground, if you will.
If I could for a minute.
Yes, sir.
I was the owner's representative when we built, not, not the city, but the country club was built. And Bob Ward was the contractor's representative. And Bob, I'd be interested as to your thoughts on these presentations.
I like, I like the construction manager at risk from, from, from the owner's side. This is a complex building. You don't want the lowest, cheapest bid that you can get. You want somebody that you've reviewed their, their past histories, their, their experiences, you double check some of their references. You want a good qualified contractor that's been down this road before, that's built something this complex and is able to handle this. That's number one. Number two, having done several design build projects, sometimes architects have trouble, they, they want to add stuff, they want to, they want to engage their creative side, which sometimes makes it a little tougher to build. And having a construct, a contractor onsite with them during this design helps them, as you said, the constructability review is very important. And you're going to get into some situations, if they start seeing the, the project cost creeping up, then they're able to do what I would call, you know, when, when you go through and review and look for, for some things, what can we substitute cheaper that would still have the same look, the same, same function, but just a slightly, you know, less expensive finish or whatever we're talking about, so that you, you help bring those costs down early on. If you wait until you do haul the design and then you put it out for bids, you may find that you're way over budget at that point. You know, you're really only relying, most of the time, you're relying on their estimate if, under that, that scenario. Whereas in this, under this construction manager at risk, you've got two parties. The, they're going to engage one of their people to help do some, some cost estimating, as well as the construction manager at risk. It's really the best of both worlds, it's a very good compromise, I think, for, for this situation. So it has, it has a lot of pluses. You know, and also, it is, it is slightly initially a little higher priced, but I think it has a good chance of being one of the, in the, when you finish, really the lowest cost, because you're not normally faced with all these potential change orders. And if you do the, in the design bid build, you, you end up pitting the contractor and the architects to get, you know, they get, they bump heads sometimes, you know, when it, when it comes to, is that a reasonable, you know, and poor old owners stuck in the, you know, we're stuck in the middle and we want it built and we want it done now and it slows it down. Whereas this eliminates a lot of this. This, this construction manager at risk really is a really good delivery method for where we're at and what we've got.
Now granted, this is the first time that we would do this, we've never done it before, but this is the county's preferred project delivery method. And I think Jason and Tessa would tell you that the industry is going this direction.
The good part is, you're going to, you're going to develop a good relationship with the architect and engineer side, as well as the contractor side, early on. And so that you're going to, you're going to, you're going to learn more doing this than you would have under the traditional method that we used to use for, for years. So it's a good learning experience for the city and I, if you've got a good quality design team, which we do, you'll end up with a good quality construction team and you'll get the best of both worlds and you'll have the best of their expertise and knowledge and experience.
Well, one, can I say something? One thing I do agree with Bob and I like that idea, and one thing I like about it is it kind of can help us, give us some options as we build the project along. Because I think a couple of things we need to be concerned about is not just putting the building up and being done, but the operating expenses. You know, we might want to spend a little extra money upfront to, let's say, cool it a lot cheaper over the next 20 years versus you go, let's go the cheapest route and then, you know, it costs us a fortune down the road. And the same thing with other aspects of it. And plus, we might also want to consider how we build it. We might want to be able to rebuild it to a degree where it could be some type of a shelter, you know? We have a lot of hurricanes in this area, we have, we could put a lot of people in there if we had a real bad natural disaster or generator options. You might, we might want to have those options as we build it. And I think that'd be tough if we go with just a design build bid phase, because then you're just, like you, Bob said, you stick it out there and then you get what you get. This way, we can kind of tweak that and we can get some options as we go along through the process. And then, you know, we, we have that and we can weigh those pros and cons as we go along.
That's a very good point about the operations piece, okay? And as you recall, we've added the management contractor to the team already and they have advised us a lot on the design. I think they would continue to be part of that team, well, they will, I don't think, I know, that they will be a part of that team to help advise the design team, the owner, the builder on best case scenario or best outcomes for construction.
Something as simple as a flooring, you know, that takes, that takes, that takes the most wear and tear from, from the traffic. And you're, as you said, the operating folks are on board and they've got experience. They're going to know what, what's going to work best in the long run and hold, hold down maintenance and clean, clean cost.
Functionally usable, it's, it's not just the expense of the building and the operation of it on, on all of the technical sides. It's got to actually, you know, you can walk into a place and it looks beautiful and you sit down and they start something and you, like, all of a sudden want to run out of the room and cover your ears because they've completely forgot to deal with acoustics or lighting is off and horrible. Whatever the case may be, all of those decisions can be made intelligently along the way with this group think, you know, think.
Heating and cooling is really, it's tough.
That's the first level.
That's the toughest thing to. That's a tough, on a large building, that's the toughest thing to not have an owner satisfied, because of just so many variations in, in occupancy, you know, what, a full occupancy, a half occupancy, guys running up and down, or girls running up and down, the, the basketball generating all that body heat. I mean, it's, it's just amazing what it, what it's gonna, and, and humidity, all that, all that sweat they're giving off really creates an extra humidity load, so.
And I won't name places, but during our road trip and kind of evaluating other similar facilities to see, you know, the successes and the failures of each, we've realized that HVAC is a huge component, because if it's an afterthought, like it was in one facility, it significantly limits how they can use it.
It's a lot harder to add it.
Yeah, well, the building is set up to be able to design in all of these different ways, but because of the HVAC, it really limits their ability to, to get to all of those.
What does value engineering enter the picture on this?
With the construction manager at risk, oh wait, every day, starts on day one.
Yeah.
And that's really the contractor's primary interest, I would imagine, is controlling costs, constructability, timeline, right? Because that's, that's how they deliver a successful project and, and stay within that guaranteed maximum price.
Well, and like you were saying, material selection, that's a big one, too. Like, it might cost a little bit more to build it with, you know, concrete versus another way, but if we don't have to rebuild it, or repaint it, or, you know, do it 15, 20 years, that saves a lot of money down the road. And that's something we have to, we obviously want to do here for a very long time.
See, that's where the operator comes in.
That's where it'd be very helpful.
That they're going to be managing the operational expenses on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah. This is, the way, the way we're, we're wanting to go is, is, gives you the best of all the world. It really will, you've got a better chance of everyone being happy and a successful project, on time, on budget, with great quality under this, this method right here.
Well, it sounds like there's a lot of support for this approach, and, and I don't think that we need a vote, but if you are willing to give us that guidance to begin pursuing this option, then, then that's what we'll do.
Consensus, I see.
Yes.
Now, the, the second bullet there, that's what's going to actually put us into action for the next phase of design. I'll tell you that we did get a verbal commitment from the TDA last week to split the cost like we had, we had done with the first phase, actually first two phases, I guess. So, you know, that provides some pricing relief to the city, but the cost is?
5.65.
5.65.
Right.
Now, as, as, as far as, oh, come on. As far as the actual number, given industry standards, that's an actual.
It's 5.6.
It's 5.65. It's a very reasonable price, given industry standard, and so we're comfortable with it. We certainly don't intend on changing the makeup of the team, and so we would ask, you know, just for some feedback on that. Eventually, we're going to have to come back with a budget amendment and a contract for council to execute, but that is the next step to continue them moving forward.
Is that included in, obviously, the building, plus the site work of parking and everything? I mean, obviously not the whole entire compound, but just everything in the vicinity that deals, but just the convention center.
It deals with, I would say, a majority of the complex. So it's doing all the utility design, the roadway design from the building, the site and interest up to it.
What about, what about the permitting side? You know, typically, the builder would take care of the, the building, the contractor would take care of the building, but, you know, the corps of engineer, wetlands determination, et cetera, and so forth, you know, typically, the architect or the engineer takes care of that as part of their fee on, on something like this.
Stormwater, erosion control, all of that, that's built in as part of this contract.
Yes.
So with Phase Three, this gets us to the point where we can start putting shovels in the ground, really.
There you go. You know, those, those permits take a while, and, and it's, you can get those underway, you get the permitting as quick as you can, so underway, so the, the corps of engineers, government shutdown, I guarantee that's bound to have affected some of those wetlands. Then you got the water quality, you know, the water and sewer stuff, too, so.
Well, and I'll tell you that Wally and, and his team have made a, a lot of progress with McAdams and their designers, and we've got a really good strategy to talk to you about with some of that infrastructure when we get to that point.
Will, will our inspectors, the, the, the value of this project, will our inspectors be able to do it, or will that, will the Department of Insurance have to be involved in this?
Not really sure yet.
They may have to be involved in a plan review.
That's what I, what I was wondering. Something like this, as large as this is going to be, you know, typically, your local teams.
Specialty systems, too, I might add.
Yep. But that's, that's just from a, you know, getting the building permit standpoint. And then once that happens, we should, if we want to do the inspection, we can have our building inspectors do it, or we can contract a building inspection.
I think for a liability purpose, it might be good to have an outside inspection as well, you know? Because you don't, if you're the saint, you inspect our own stuff, you know what I mean, from that perspective, so. Might not be a bad idea.
Read your own next to me.
Yeah, so it might not be a bad idea for something down the road, for that to happen.
Well, that's, that's certainly a decision for another day.
Yeah, I just throw it out there just to.
It's good feedback.
It is good feedback. On the list of other things to, to discuss.
So it sounds like we're still moving forward? Yes, we'll work with the TDA, get money appropriated, split the cost.
Hands up on the consensus.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. Unless there are any other questions, I think we've got everything we need.
Thank you for the communications throughout this process, it's been helpful to kind of understand it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go for your time.
It's very important that we keep you informed, because this is a complicated project.
Thanks for, thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Unless you want to get in. The council probably prefer.
Anthony, I think you're still on the bet for the night.
Yes, sir, I am. So it's, it's been quite some time since we've had an update on, on Joe Ed, but the good news is, is that Joe Ed is alive and well. We've gone through some transition over the past six months, but we've really had some dedicated folks who have put in a lot of volunteer time to keep Joe Ed moving. And I think today, we're stronger than we have been ever before, because the folks here that you see on the screen, like I said, are completely dedicated. It's a team that's galvanized together, and some of the feed, we, we were able to present to the county commissioners a couple of weeks ago, and the feedback that we received from them was unanimous and very positive. So I, I think most of you probably know the folks on the, on the screen here. This is our executive committee, and they're the ones who have been carrying the torch for the past six months since we lost our executive director. And like I said, they've put in a lot of volunteer work. Let's talk a little bit about initiatives. So I'm not going to get into detail on this, but we're still working on project development with Project Coffee, as well as Camp Davis. Coffee is in Swansboro, Camp Davis is in Holly Ridge. And the intent there is to, to make those sites ready for industrial development, or heavy commercial, just depends on, you know, what the opportunities that come up. Project Ajax is a workforce housing project that we're collaborating with a private developer on down in Holly Ridge, and we'll probably see a lot more activity on that project after the beginning of the year. And we've spoken about this before, and we'll, we'll do it again here later in the presentation, but the community business loan fund is, is thriving. And so, we had some seed money from Truist and Duke Energy. All that's been loaned out throughout the, the county, a lot of it for downtown Jacksonville. And those businesses are thriving as well, and they're repaying the loans, and that's going to allow us to loan more money to other businesses in the future. I think most importantly, we've been able to, to focus introspectively on our operations through the development of a new strategic plan. We certainly appreciate the funding from the city council, as well as Onslow County, Onwassa, and Holly Ridge to help fund that plan. We hired a contractor to come in and help us, they did an excellent job. And right now, what we're hoping to implement is a multi-year funding strategy that will allow Joe Ed to be financially stable for at least the next three years. And that's directly tied to what we're trying to accomplish with the strategic plan. So again, I'm putting more names up here, but the, the whole point is, is that there has been an all hands-on-deck approach to supporting Joe Ed over the past six to eight months. I think we all know these folks, and, and they've put in a lot of time to help us specifically develop a strategic plan. Some of those folks helped us immensely with the engagement process, and this is what we spent a, a majority of our time on with the strategic plan, because this was a situation where we didn't want to dictate from the executive committee, you know, what should we be working on over the next three years? We wanted to go out, solicit input, and we did that by using some work groups. So the folks that you saw on the previous slide, they took charge of each one of these, and invited in stakeholders, had drill-down conversations that all helped to inform the strategic plan. I know several of you participated in the local government interviews. We did that with every municipality in Onslow County, as well as the county commissioners. Got some really good feedback. And then we had two surveys, one for business owners and one for the community at large. When we first started the strategic, strategic planning process, I think the executive committee and the strategic planning committee immediately identified that, you know, vetting our, our vision and mission statement and kind of refocusing on that was a very high priority. We wanted to make, we wanted to make sure that we were pointed in the right direction with our vision, and that we were getting towards that vision with the appropriate steps from our, from our mission, okay? And I think we can all kind of get behind what that vision statement says. I mean, it's, it's a pretty broad statement. We all want Onslow County to prosper and thrive. But as we went through the planning process, and I'm not going to read the mission statement, but if you look at the very last two lines where it says, fostering strategic collaborations between public and private sectors, if you look at the list of the folks who were on those two previous slides, we've got very strong collaboration right now between public and private sectors, and we feel that that's a huge role that Joe Ed has to play moving into the future. So we've given you a handout that provides a little bit more about the strategic plan, and we can certainly send you a link to it so that you can read it in detail if you like. It's 100 and some odd pages, so we're not going to cover all of it. But what I wanted to show you here is that we've got a three-year implementation schedule. And rather than reading all these initiatives, I think it's important to point out that some of the themes that were identified through our strategic planning process align very closely with the goals and objectives that council adopted, I believe it was two, maybe three years ago regarding economic development. So the, the goal, the, the whole, the goal, the intent and the goals are lining up, so that helps to facilitate that collaborative process between the public and the private sector. So here, you look at things like business retention and expansion, site preparation, entrepreneurship, veterans, business, collaborative. You know, these are all things that we talked about several years ago when we identified our goals and objectives. And again, it's just great to see those similar concepts show up here. In order to implement the, the strategic plan, we're going on a roadshow, and we're basically providing this update, a little bit more to the county commissioners, but basically the same update. And we're rolling out a, what we're calling a, a three-year, a multi-year funding strategy. And it includes all the municipalities in Onslow County, as well as the county itself. We started with Onslow County, and again, we presented this information to them, and the feedback was extremely positive. The formula that we're using to request funding is per capita. So based upon the operating cost of, of Joe Ed, or the projected operating cost, I should say, you know, we broke that down into a per capita rate, and that's what we're requesting from each local government. So from here, we'll be in Richlands, we'll be in Swansboro, we'll be in Topsail, et cetera. But we'll find out what the county commissioners have to say on the 17th. The funding request that we had for them was $400,000 a year, and they seemed very supportive. I mean, of course, the ink's not dry on anything, but it was unanimous, unanimous support for what Joe Ed is doing. Our request for Jacksonville is 100,000 annually, and we've already contributed 40,000 in fiscal year 26, so we would want to supplement that with the 60,000 to make it whole. And then in '27 and '28, it'd be $100,000. Now, Ron can correct me if I'm wrong, but at, at one point in time, I believe, our contribution to Joe Ed was around 90,000.
It's comparable.
So, you know, even though it is a lot of money, it's not far off base from what we've contributed in the past, and of course, we all know what cost escalation has done. So the three-year commitment, of course, would be voted on over three budget years, but we just wanted to get some feedback on that concept, and hopefully be able to take action at an upcoming meeting to appropriate the 60,000 for the remainder of fiscal year 26. Yes, ma'am.
Joe Ed has done some really good things over the years in our community, but in all the things that I have seen come out of the group over all the years that, that I've been in business in our community, involved with the chamber, and seen what Joe Ed has been doing, and interacting with them, and seeing the outcomes, this move fits our community the best. It's not just aligned with city goals, or Swansboro goals, or other goals, it's, it fits. It fits the resources we have, it fits the opportunities that we have, it allows for industrial, but it doesn't only target industrial, which is, you know, there's some hiccups to that with the port situation and the rail situation, and, you know.
Sure.
There's challenges to some of the other things that have been tried in isolation before. So I will say, you know, from my seat, kudos and commendations to the leadership team of Joe Ed for taking this on and investing of themselves to make sure that the organization didn't just exist and continue, but really refocused intelligently on the needs of Onslow County and the municipalities within it, so that we are working intelligently toward goals that will benefit all, because this does support the rising tide, floats all boats commission. When Jacksonville does better, the county does better. When Swansboro does better, the county does better. We all are better off doing better together. And so, I'm happy to see the, the fit, if that makes sense. And, you know, like, it's comparable, but it's also fair.
Sure.
A per capita approach means that, you know, a smaller community is contributing and a larger community is contributing, the way it's not only on one entity or two. I think it's a smart plan, and I think it's a balanced plan.
Well, and from my perspective, to me, the biggest success here is the collaboration amongst the city, the county, as well as our private sector partners. And what we're doing here, at least from my perspective, is aligning Joe Ed's operations with the need of the community stakeholders. And so what my hope is, is that some of the work that I've been doing, you know, like on Project Frontier, on the Business Park expansion and so forth, you know, that we may be able to transfer back to Joe Ed as good collaborative partners, so that they can help us advance these projects on our behalf. The last piece here is regarding the community business loan fund, and as you recall, at one point in time, we were basically ready to sign a contract with Joe Ed to do a, a small business loan fund for downtown Jacksonville. And, you know, everybody seemed aligned on that concept, but unfortunately, shortly before we got the contract to you, you know, we had staff turn over at Joe Ed, and there were other. were other priorities that we needed to focus on. At this point, we're ready to go, as long as the council is. And so the request would be, and this funding would come from the Economic Impact Fund, basically what we hoped to contribute in '25, which was $50,000, and then what we had talked about contributing in '26, which is another $50,000. All that being told, we could put $100,000 into small business loans for downtown. So if you're supportive of that concept, we'll bring that agreement back to you, as well as the budget amendment, and try to move that forward as soon as we possibly can, because there are people out there kind of waiting to see what happens here, because this is a killer resource for them to get started.
Yeah, the timing, the timing for the Community Business Loan Fund works out great for downtown, because we have had multiple business owners and building owners who have said, what can the city do to support the mission downtown? So now that we have the streetscape and the infrastructure completed, and the businesses are starting, and we're having some revitalization on the buildings, this fund could provide that level of support, which is where we can come in as a city to partner downtown. We're not going to buy those buildings. We're not going to build, rebuild the buildings, and we're not looking to open our own businesses. But those partners can then apply, and by going through JOED, then we'll have the ability for them to execute the program and work with those businesses. So we're excited about that one as well, as long as that's something council wants us to bring back.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
So both of these items would come back at the next meeting. The bottom one, we already have ready in terms of the document, and then as long as we can wrap up the top funding agreement, we'll have a vote at the next council meeting.
We're hoping to use the county's template, the agreement that they've developed for this, for this funding. We're hoping to use that, so it should be a really quick process. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a Public Services City Code discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'll go ahead and apologize. Code discussion is not nearly as interesting as one city center or JOED, but, you know, it is still necessary. But I apologize now. Back in September, I brought to you three chapters of city code that are related to infrastructure that public services are responsible for. Two of those, I briefed you on, we got together on the language, got that language changed, and those have been to you at two previous city council meetings. As we were pulling together, the third one, which is Chapter 23, Streets and Sidewalks, the city attorney and I started talking, and we wanted to revisit something that we had discussed prior. So just as a quick refresher, our changes to Chapter 23, Streets and Sidewalks, the primary changes are really clarifying language of who's responsible for easements, maintaining the grass and other things of roadside swells, correlating the language between the UDO, the MSSD, the Manual of Specification Standards and Design, that we require our contractors to build to, and then city code. The third was the larger discussion, or the last, I should say. The last item was the larger discussion. And that was to talk about the driveway pipes, the maintenance of driveway pipes and replacement of driveway pipes leading to individual residents. We're not talking about businesses. Businesses are responsible for their own. We're really talking about, again, accessing private driveways and the pipes conveying stormwater under those driveways. And the reason that we wanted to revisit that was to talk about city maintenance, which is what we do now, but the potential liability associated with that. So I'll give you a couple examples, and we have two from this summer that we've done, and I'll share with you the reason we wanted to come back and talk with you. So this is, again, when we talk about driveway pipes, I showed you this picture before. You know, we're really talking about that area where the ditch meets the driveway. There's a pipe there to convey stormwater under the driveway and move it down to the outfall. And then, but the pipe is really there for the driveway, for the owner to have access to their property. One thing I mentioned, but I didn't show you a picture of, so I revised the picture a little bit. This is one where you can see you have a driveway pipe that then goes into yard piping, because somebody has piped the front yard, which also still conveys stormwater along the roadway and leads to larger discussions of who maintains all of that pipe the homeowners installed for aesthetic purposes. Now, there have been changes since some of these have been done, because we would have encroachment agreements now that they would have to apply for before they could do this. But we do have these that show up periodically, where the homeowner just likely didn't know they needed that, and it's already in, so what do we do? So we wanted to make sure that we talked about that also in our clarification of our language. So the two examples that I wanted to give you that we've recently dealt with, the first I don't have a picture of, I'll just explain it to you. It was an area that was built in the '90s. It has roadside swell with a driveway and a pipe that crosses it, similar to this, but just the driveway. And a neighbor called because dirt was starting to fill in their, the portion of the ditch in front of their house. So our crews went out like they would, removed the dirt to ensure flow, and then started investigating, because the dirt is coming from somewhere. What we found is that an adjacent neighbor had a hole in the pipe underneath their driveway, and dirt was migrating from underneath their driveway into the hole and then running down the swell. Well, our staff noted that when they visited the homeowner, not only was there a void under the driveway, it had a walkway up to the house, which was much, much shorter than this, the walkway had started to settle because of migration there. So then you run into concerns. They also noted that the gutters didn't move water away from the house, so now you could end up with water running off, following that void, carrying dirt with it, that now leads to cracks in the driveway, cracks in the walkway, and potentially foundation issues. Again, the pipe is there for access to the property. I think we could prove that that's not our responsibility, but we do maintain the pipe. So when the attorney and I started talking about this, we thought that, you know, while it doesn't sound like much for us to maintain that pipe, we probably should at least revisit the discussion and just talk about the liability, because I did not talk about that piece the first time. The second situation I actually have a picture of, and we ended up, we found this one by mistake. A gentleman was replacing a driveway for a homeowner and did the right thing, came in to talk to us about replacing that pipe. They actually wanted to put, remove the concrete pipe and put in plastic. Our crew went out there and looked at it and basically advised them and said, you know, you don't have any cover, so we wouldn't recommend plastic. We think the pipe would be okay to reuse. We'll do the work and let you re-pour the driveway, which is what we did. So we used the pipe that was existing. You can see the gap in the first picture, which again follows what we found at the other location, just an open joint that was misaligned when it was installed, so we had poor installation to begin with. Dirt migrates, driveways crack, but again, the pipe is there for the driveway. So we, you can see our fix at the end, what we did is realign the pipe, put the sections back together, and then we wrapped that joint to keep, it allows water to penetrate, but does not allow dirt or soil movement, so it will stabilize. And then, in this case, the contractor replaced the driveway. One of the things that we frequently run into, and again, we only do a few of these a year, but we have done two this summer. But one of the things that we frequently, frequently run into is that when we go out there, the driveway is so cracked up, because it's an aged driveway, it's an aged pipe, and when we, we cut, as you can see here fairly, the first picture shows about how much we take out. We take out just enough to work, and that's what we put debt, put back. But a homeowner who has a cracked driveway will have a nice new patch at the front of their driveway, and they want us to keep going further, right? So unfortunately, we have to draw the line somewhere. So we typically draw the line right at that area where we need to work. I will say, if there's an expansion joint fairly close by, within a foot or so, we'll go to an expansion joint, because it does make sense to remove the concrete up to an expansion joint, so we don't leave a small section of concrete. We wouldn't do that to a homeowner. But again, if you do more, it adds to the cost. So I showed you this chart the last time. It kind of shows you the people around us, what they do, what they do, and who is responsible. What I will say is, I didn't update the chart. I did check around and do some additional research. I still didn't find anything for Kinston or Goldsboro, but I did find some things, and I'll show you one in a minute, for some of the towns around Raleigh, Durham, Chapel Hill, Carboro, Pittsboro. Most of those follow the DOT standards, which is, they maintain the swell, the right-of-way, and the flow, that's it. They don't do the pipe, they don't do, they don't do anything outside of a right-of-way. So where we follow the water from a city road or a city property and make sure it's clear all the way to an outfall, the DOT does not do that. In some of the small towns where I've found that it was the property owner's responsibility, really followed that DOT model. We're not proposing that, because it is important for the other residents to make sure that we maintain flow to the outfall. But again, we are still concerned with that driveway pipe because of liability. So this is an example that I found from Carboro, and you'll see, basically, everything that's not the road is maintained by the property owner. So, which is basically DOT's model. They will do the flow line of the ditch, but anything outside of the right-of-way, they don't do. I like, I'm not talking about the maintenance part. I like this graphic, because I think it's very clear, so we'll probably steal something like this. We have one already for our easements, but we'll probably develop something like this once we get our code in place. So that brings me to the recommendation. From a liability standpoint, we still like a shared model, where the city basically covers the cost of labor and equipment to do the work, and then the homeowner is responsible for the material. In most cases, it would be pipe, wrap, and concrete. The good thing about that is it keeps that liability clear. The, you know, the city's investment is to make sure water is moving freely and flowing through the pipe, and it's installed correctly to ensure that. And the homeowner's piece of that is the access to the property. And then if we get a request to go a little bit further into a property, it makes it slightly easier, because the city's not covering that cost. We're just going to form up a little more than we would have and use a little more concrete than we would have, but the homeowner would then eat that cost. What we wouldn't want to do is do a full driveway, but going a little bit further either direction does not create complications. So if we need to go five feet to the next expansion joint instead of one foot, it makes it slightly easier. The other piece that we talked about is, we recognize that, you know, I think the example I showed you where we use the existing pipe, in many cases, you can reuse concrete pipe, so that makes it cheaper. We're probably talking a couple of hundred bucks for that replacement in the materials that we use. You're really talking the wrap and backfill, because the property owner was already covering the cost of that driveway replacement, because they were doing more than just the area that we did. In the, if we were replacing it or realigning it, and we were putting the concrete back, you would add a little bit more for the cost of the concrete, but it would still be under But we recognize that can be a challenge for some homeowners, because some of the areas that we're talking about include some of the older areas of Country Club. It includes areas like Georgetown. Sunset Acres has a few. So there are, there are areas we're aware of that, but we feel like we could build something into the fee schedule that would allow us to build that out over time. And with that, the attorney wanted me to point out that when they sign for that, there's also a liability waiver there that the city collects. So I wanted to let you know I did hear you. I did, you know, listen to what we were, what we talked about at the last meeting, but we did think that, being that I didn't mention the liability piece, it was smart to come back to you and talk to you about that.
Wasn't your, wasn't your, wasn't your place to talk about liability?
Well, I don't know. I try to think of those things, and, you know, I miss that, so I'll accept, I'll accept that.
That's right. And that's why we put it on for discussion, because when we do pitch to you a proposed amendment to the code, we want to make sure we have all of your input and all of your understanding of what this entails, because we've worked really hard to make sure that we do clarify what's in the code. All these other municipalities make it very clear, either the city takes responsibility or the city doesn't. And that was the problem in the beginning. We wanted to make sure we made it clear, which we did. And we've looked at some of these hybrid models. That way, we can still make it clear, but incorporate council's intent to have the city step in in some of these circumstances, while still making it clear what the homeowner's responsibility is to limit our liability and just to make it consistent across the board.
You know what I think about in terms of, like, the maintenance of the ditches that we walked quite a bit together, is that there was somewhat of precedent set in some of these, these issues in terms of who cleaned it, just who maintained it, because at times, because the city was smaller, you had the city doing it. So it was already, like I said, as a precedent set, so I'm trying to figure out, because of that, and attorney, you know that precedent set, shouldn't we still be utilizing some of, you know, in some of those communities where those things have already been in place?
Well, and that's what we're trying to do, is basically codify the precedent, right? Is the practice has been very nuanced, and we want to make sure that we just have that all written out, so that it's very clear where the expectations are and who's responsible for what.
And consistent for everyone.
Exactly.
I do like the idea of if the homeowner has to incur some expense, which does happen. I mean, everybody has a refrigerator to iron, HVAC go out, or whatever. It hurts, though, and if, depending on where you are at that moment in your life, you may not have those resources available. So some sort of payment structure or plan where the city can help, and then that can be paid back over time, or maybe even in some cases, based on economic, you know, income for the household, maybe we could establish some sort of grant.
Some kind of grant fund.
Grant fund, or a process that might make some resources available to people who really need it the most. But your average working families, having time to pay it back when they didn't plan on that happening this week would be huge.
I'm looking at a lot of, a lot of those seniors in those neighborhoods now, they won't be able to do this, some of this stuff. There's no way they can do it at this time. So I'm trying to figure out the best, because of what had been happening originally, and they never planned for it.
Maybe Neighborhood Improvement Services has a process or a plan that might, can be adaptive for that, I don't know, but.
And we'll consider some of that when we, when we do pitch the final version that we're asking for council to adopt. And one of the things that it does incorporate as well is also the idea that some folks may have some extra funds available, and the city may be able to assist, like you were saying, with the expansion joints. Right now, the minimum we do, you may have a homeowner who says, look, I have a little extra money, and I don't want this expansion joint to look so good when the rest of it's all crumbled up. Can I have an agreement with the city where while you're in there, I'll cover this portion of it? of it, I'll waive some of this liability and make sure it's clear what I'm responsible for, but the city can assist in putting it all together?"
That's a benefit to that homeowner, because now they're not paying a contractor, all of the labor on top of it and everything else. If they're, the city has to be there anyway, they actually can get a little more done at a much lower cost.
And we're still a good steward of our own public funds, to say we're using taxpayer dollars for the greater good and making it consistent.
We gotta do better at educating as we go forward.
And that's, yeah, that's key, is getting that code amendment so that it's clear what people can.
Well, speaking of that, like, can we put a distance on it so people are clear, like, how, so they can say, "Hey, here's the street, and X amount of feet in, if it's five, eight, 10 feet, that's where it stops," you know, plus or minus, just so it's clear to people so they understand. If you say right-of-way, you know, people, maybe they don't know where the right-of-way is, they don't know how to research, how to work, but in case if you just say, "Hey, from the street, 10 feet, this is what we're responsible for, from here to your house, that's on you." Would that be, just to make it clear and easy for people to understand?
I think most cases would follow the right-of-way.
Exactly, people will follow the right-of-way.
But they don't know where it is.
Exactly. And that way, and if we all know, like, hey, the pipe is running parallel with the street, we can kind of determine, we need 10 feet in or whatever.
And do you think some neighborhoods might be a little bit different? Because when I think of a neighborhood like Georgetown, where your properties are, the lines isn't so linear versus a new subdivision where there are your right-of-ways, your easements, are going to be somewhat difficult. How do you then codify that to be adaptable to that specific neighborhood because of the way it was built in that timeframe where the UDO didn't exist, because originally that was part of the county, and then they were annexed into the city, but nothing was ever codified to bring those particular neighborhoods back up to date to be aligned with our current neighborhoods?
And you're exactly right, because I would venture to say probably 90% of the ones that we're talking about that have driveway pipes were in the county originally, and we annexed in. Because I can tell you from at least 2006, because I brought the, the code to the council at the ti, the MSSD to the council at the time, and it was there prior to me bringing that MSSD, it, the, the city standard has been curb and gutter, sidewalks both sides of city streets. So you're exactly right, most of these stem from developments that the city annexed, like the Country Club area, the Georgetown area, some in Sunset Acres, Francis Park, which is out 24.
Even down Market Street.
Yes.
Even Bell Fork Road.
That's correct.
Off of Bell Fork Road, the subdivisions in there.
About the backyard, especially on DOT.
So backyard piping, we don't maintain, so.
So if somebody has put, like my next-door neighbor has, has covered over and put piping, somebody did years ago. So that's there, that's that homeowner's responsibility.
Yes.
Which one, which homeowner was it that put it in?
That's a great question. I'll let the attorney talk about it. North Carolina law, though. Rural state law.
And that's part of what we also want to avoid, is we want to make it real clear so that we don't get involved in some of these neighbor disputes, so they don't have the city as a third party, so the judges can decide, "Hey, look, this is clearly where the city's involved, this is where they're not, this is where the neighbors are creating an issue for each other and a nuisance privately between those parties."
I think about fences, a lot of times people don't know who, who has really, you know, like in northward neighborhoods, you know, it's changed hands so many times, who, who put the fence up originally, nobody knows.
I got different heights in my bedroom.
For those standards too, when, when we annex something in that's been in the county, this is part of the argument we've had with the state, is the reason we have standards is to help with development. So if you talk about the, the subdivisions that weren't built as subdivisions, they were built as individual lots, if they weren't built to a standard and they didn't have curb, gutter, and sidewalks, but then they're annexed in, that doesn't necessarily mean that the city goes in and provides those services when we annex them in. So the same concept here is, if you were in the county and your culvert had issues that you built with a house, the county's not coming to fix that for you, they're not coming out there and implementing this if you're in the county. So if you have someone that says they've been annexed and they're looking for that benefit, this is a benefit. This is a new benefit that they will be receiving to have the city share those expenses. If an area stays in the county, no one's going to share the expenses with them. So that's also part of that, that dialogue of, you're in the city, here's something that adds to that list. So it's not part of your taxes per se, it's part of the use in the stormwater fees, and so that's why it shows how we're utilizing those fees for the overall community.
And I, my first house was in Rain Tree when I moved to Jacksonville, and there was a neighbor around the corner from me that, you know, were DOT, their side yard pipe blew out, and it was an extension of DOT's piping that was put in with the development. It was a 36-inch pipe, when it blew out, DOT marked the right-of-way and said, "That's your responsibility."
That's what they did.
No homeowner could afford that.
That's not a G L I.
Yes.
Yeah, go back to Mr. Jackson's point, though, the education matters. So just like Wally's point with Carboro, if we can create those documents and then we educate people, the more we can push it out, especially with our turnover, the, the more educated our, our citizens are going to be to know what those responsibilities are, just like your comment about the refrigerator goes out. I mean, you, there are warranty programs, there are things we need to encourage, but maybe that's something that, that Tracy's team can look at, and there's an avenue there, but it's a challenge for us because we are providing a service here if council approves it.
And we do have several things in the fee schedule, which is why I mentioned that, that are cost or cost plus. For example, we don't do any more just because of sheer demand, but the city at one time would install a water and sewer tap, and it's still in the fee schedule, it's cost plus 10%. Now, I'm not saying we tackle the 10% here, but we at least have a precedent in the fee schedule for a homeowner reimbursing the city for work.
And also, what is a service line that provides that type of insurance, it's really generally low cost. What is something that we need to definitely push up?
Yes, and we've been contacted by a group that does that. You know, Piedmont Natural Gas has partnered with a, a private company that provides insurance on your line into and through your house. We've been contacted by a few of those. The problem is, who do you align with? So we, we've never, we've never put that into practice, because we can't say we support company XYZ for that insurance, but it is available.
I get, just making the homeowner understand that they can get it, that's the big thing.
It is, it is out there for service line. But remember, the, the city will maintain water and sewer service lines up to the meter or up to the cleanout. And if, if they don't have a cleanout, if they install one in the right-of-way, we'll, we'll maintain up to that point. Because that's also another very expensive endeavor for a homeowner, if they have their sewer service line break near the main, it's typically in the road, so a utility contractor would have to do the work, dig it up, repair it, and repave it, so.
Isn't that one of the changes we made in the code, in all of our previous discussions with council, to clarify responsibilities for water and sewer?
So that, that is our, our responsibility is clearly defined.
And that's the goal here too, to do the same.
We don't, we, we want it fair for the homeowner and, and for the city.
And also, don't forget, the city of Jacksonville is part of the National League of Cities that has a service line warranty. So that's a benefit, as being part of the National League of Cities that you are.
They have contractors, that they, they basically, they've endorsed, yes, yeah.
Yes, they, the National League does have ones that they endorse.
Mm-hmm.
Are we still putting cutouts? I know at one time, was it a grant or something available, where we put cutouts in yards?
For, so what we do is, you know, I'm scared to share some of this, but we go evaluate, we go evaluate, if we, if we receive a call for sewer backup or something like that, we go evaluate, we look at where the meter's located, we, we try to find a cleanout. In many cases, we can't find cleanouts, especially in some of these similar neighborhoods. And it's not that the water and sewer system was, the water, the water system may have been, it could still be on Wassa, or it may have been accepted by the city, but the sewer system was installed by the city at the time we annex, or shortly thereafter. That was a requirement of the city annexing, is installing sewer. So we've loosely interpreted, if it's an area where we installed the sewer and house was there prior to us installing the sewer, we probably should have installed the cleanout as part of our project. So if we need to install a cleanout to clean it, we, we use that loose interpretation to say, the initial project, we would have been responsible for, so we use that to say we can, we can install a cleanout for that service.
And it's okay to do that on a case-by-case basis, too, you know, we don't have to have that necessarily so clear in code.
Have some latitude to make calls on the ground when you see the need.
Yes.
On this item, it is ready, so if council's good with it, then we can bring this back at the next agenda item as well, or the next council meeting.
Any other questions about this? Okay, Wally, you'll bring that. Is everybody loosely comfortable with the shared method?
Much prefer shared as to putting it all on a homeowner, so.
What's your definition of loosely?
Well, I wanted to give the attorney room to work, because she's going to be the one that helps me grab that.
And we, and we really think the hybrid approach incorporates what, what feedback we got from council, which is that we are such a unique community, we don't necessarily fit the mold of some of these cities outside of Raleigh that are very much on the homeowner take that DOT policy, nor do we fit the mold of some of these municipalities that say it's all on the city. We do have that one example of the hybrid approach that's worked really well in another municipality, we're going to be borrowing pretty heavily from that, but we think that that's, that's the path forward to give you guys something to consider at the next.
Consensus on that?
I'll be.
Okay. You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray, you want to go ahead and do the, you know, the city?
I would, if you don't mind, mayor, thank you so much. Mayor, we had over 3,000 people attend the 42nd Beirut Memorial Observance on October 23rd. You know, this year was, there was a little bit of, some challenges about getting the event pulled together based on the government shutdown, but we were fortunate enough that the base and General Rizzo, all of the team pulled together, and the turnout for this event was incredible. And it just shows that year after year, for 42 years, our community has committed to never forget, and it's more than just the 241 US service members who lost their lives that day, but it's the families too. And so the commitment goes to, to those individuals, to the family, and then as a community. It's, it's amazing to see the series of events that take place that day. The day did begin with the candlelight vigil, and then we had the observance in the middle of the day, and it was just impressive to see the overall turnout in and around and the individuals that participated. For everybody that was there, thank you for participating, thank you for committing to remember and to, to never forget the men and women who served for the Beirut Observance. And then the other item we wanted to bring to you, mayor, is this Friday at 9:30 a.m., so in two days, at the Freedom Fountain, the Onslow Civic Affairs Committee will have the 13th Annual Observance of the Freedom Fountain Observance. So if you have the ability to be there on Friday, it'll be at our Freedom Fountain, and this fountain serves as a tribute to all who have passed through Onslow County while serving our country. In addition, Rolling Thunder Chapter 5, the Veterans Day Parade, will be Saturday on Western Boulevard at 10 a.m. So Friday, you have the Freedom Fountain Observance, and then Saturday, you have Rolling Thunder presenting the parade.
We also have the red, white, blue, some of the red on Friday evening.
Friday evening, we'll have Flank Co. having the concert out at the Commons on Friday night.
Fireworks.
That's all happening.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to go in a closing session to the consultant attorney.
Second.
Okay.